Good morning. My name is Kathleen Casey and I serve as Chair of the Financial Accounting Foundation. I'd like to start this morning by welcoming our stakeholders tuning into today's meeting. Today's meeting, we're going to include reports from the FASB Chair, the GASB Chair, the FAFF Executive Director, and the FAFF Treasurer. We also will hear reports about the latest activities of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council and the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. And finally, a report from our Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we get to these reports, I am pleased to announce some important appointments. Earlier today, the FAFF Board of Trustees elected a new Chair, and I'm happy to announce the appointment of Edward C. Bernard, who will join the FAFF Board of Trustees January 1, 2023, at the conclusion of my three-year term as Chair. Ed's term ends on December 31, 2025, at which time he will be eligible to serve a second three-year term. Ed is currently a Director at LPL Financial Holdings, Inc., where he is a member of the Audit and Compensation Committee. He is also a Director of UTI Asset Management Company Limited, where he chairs the Stakeholders Relationship Committee, and is a member of the Nominating and Remuneration and Social and Corporate Responsibility Committees. Prior to these roles, Ed spent the majority of his career at T. Rowe Price Group, where he was elected to the firm's Board of Directors, and later served as Chair of Corporate Board, Chair of T. Rowe Price Mutual Funds, and as a member of the firm's Management Committee. Ed brings decades of knowledge and investment industry leadership experience to this role, and aligns perfectly with our mission to oversee the accounting standard-setting boards as they work to provide useful information to investors and others who rely on accurate and comparable financial reports. The FAFF has also appointed a new member of the FASB, Joyce Joseph. Ms. Joseph will succeed Gary Buesser, whose term ends June 30, 2023. Her term will begin on July 1, 2023, and conclude June 30, 2028. She will then be eligible for consideration for reappointment to one additional five-year term. Ms. Joseph began her career at KPMG as a Senior Auditor before joining Deutsche Bank as Assistant Vice President, then Bear Stearns as a Vice President. She was also a Vice President at JP Morgan Chase &amp; Company and a Managing Director at Standard &amp; Poor's Rating Services, before joining Capital Accounting Advisory and Research, LLC. She brings a unique depth of understanding of the standard-setting process and its relevance to the financial investor, having served on the PCAOB Standard Advisory Committee, Standard Advisory Group, and as an advisor to the AICPA's Board of Examiners, setting policy for the CPA exams and shaping the future of the accounting profession and its members. The trustees have also reappointed Elizabeth Pierce as Chair and Robert Hamilton as Vice Chair of the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. Both will serve terms that begin January 1, 2023, and conclude on December 31, 2024, at which time they will be eligible for reappointment for one additional term. She will serve a term beginning January 1, 2023, concluding on December 31, 2025. So I'd like to officially welcome all these new appointees, and I will take a moment a little later in the meeting to thank those who will be completing their service. I'm also pleased to announce that earlier today, the FAFF Trustees approved our new strategic plan, which establishes important priorities for our organization for the next several years. An earlier draft of the plan was published for public comment in June, and we thank the stakeholders who improved our thinking with their thoughtful and incisive comment letters. We will publish the final version of the plan on our website and distribute it electronically to our stakeholders in the near future. I would like to extend a special thanks to Trustees Bruce Haring, David Lillard, Larry Salva, Mike Rawlings, Lynette Kelly, and especially to our Vice Chair, Mary Barth, for shepherding our organizations through this important planning process. We look forward to redoubling our efforts to make progress on our plan goals in the years ahead. So with that, I would like to now move into our regular agenda. And the first item of business is to approve the minutes from the board's August 23 and September 19 meeting. I'd like to have a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for that. So now we'll move into our reports. We have several reports. We're going to start with the FASB, and I'll ask Rich Jones to provide his report. Rich?
Great. Thank you, Kathy. The third quarter of '22 and the start of the fourth quarter was a busy and productive one for the FASB. We wrapped up our Agenda Outreach process in June, and since then, we've been actively pursuing the projects on our revised agendas, including those projects cited as the highest priorities based on our investor input. This includes projects on our projects on disclosure of income statement expenses, crypto asset accounting, and income tax disclosures. Those projects continue to move forward on an accelerated basis. In addition, we have issued final standards on disclosure of supplier financing, and expect to issue final standards on reference rate reform and insurance transition shortly. We've also issued exposure drafts related to an EITF consensus on accounting for investments and tax credit structures, our segment disclosures project, accounting by a joint venture formation, and in addition, a conceptual framework chapter on reporting entity. We also expect to issue EDs on common control leasing and then conceptual framework chapter on recognition and derecognition shortly. Our post-implementation review on revenue recognition, leasing, and CECL continue to move forward, and we continue to make changes based on the input we're hearing. We are also taking careful notes regarding improvements that we can make to our process based on feedback from that process. We also, during this period, had an in-person joint meeting with the IASB, and we discussed projects of mutual interest, including goodwill amortization, intangible assets, as well as many other projects on both of our agendas. On behalf of my colleagues on the board, I do want to thank you for your continued support as we work to fulfill our mission. I would leave you with the fact that I am confident that the path that we have set forward, we did the right outreach in setting our path, we have the right agenda, and we are executing on that agenda. With that, I look forward to taking your questions. Thanks, Kathy.
Two questions for Rich. Yes, Tim?
Hey, Rich. First, I want to congratulate you on what I would call a very successful investor outreach program. That's not my question, but I am impressed by the results that are generated. Thanks for that. I wanted to ask you about the communication and sort of informal teamwork with the other international standard setters outside the US. You mentioned the IASB, and our group FASB conducted joint educational efforts, and maybe just elaborate a little more. And I know there's an additional board form not directly related to us, of course, the ISSB, and just how we make sure we stay in touch with other standard setters around the world to take whatever input that is worth.
Great. And thanks for that question. And I would note that we meet beyond the ISSB. We've also met with the Japanese Accounting Standards Board, the Canadian Accounting Standards Board, and we also have an opportunity through a multilateral network where we get to meet with representatives from other nations. So it is broader. The ISSB meeting that we had this past quarter was a joint meeting in person. Well, we did one a year ago, and it was by remote connection. It's great to get together. We have regular dialogue with the international standard setters, particularly the ISSB, where our staff regularly talks to their staff to understand what they're working on, the direction they're headed, and we share information back and forth, because we recognize at the end of the day that a good idea doesn't have a border, right? And we're more than willing to share those good ideas amongst us. At the end of the day, we have the same objective, which is to continuously improve accounting standards, and we're focused on that.
Mary?
So, Rich, I know that the FASB is working on PI, Post-Implementation Review, projects for some of the big standards that they've done. Could you comment a little bit about whether the process is working? The PIR process itself is generating the kind of benefits you thought it would? And also, I know that there was a conference a couple of weeks ago with academics that provided research, academic research on those three projects, and I wondered if you'd comment on what you learned from that conference.
Great. And thanks, Barry. Great question. The post-implementation review not only helps us with improving those three standards, but it also helps us take a look at our process and what lessons we can learn for the next standard that we set. The academic conference that you referenced was great, and it was led by, our key representative was Christine Botterson, who spearheaded that on behalf of the FASB, and it generated an interest in academics in doing research on our three standards that are undergoing PIR that I think without it, we wouldn't have had. And I benefited from spending two days listening to it. Others were able to spend all three days, but we got to listen to the input from those academics, what they were learning from their research, and giving us some insight into what parts of our standards were working as designed, some other things to take a look at. So I think that was a great part of it. All of our PIR activities are shared publicly on our website, so they're there. There's a special section there as we do outreach and we improve our standards, and also as we get ideas on our processes. Wrapping up, at some point in time, sometime in the 23-24 timeframe, we'll start wrapping up our first post-implementation review, which will be revenue recognition. And we'll be doing that by issuing a public report to share with all of our stakeholders exactly what we carried out and what we learned.
Thank you.
Yeah, Diane?
I'd like to turn to crypto. It's hard to have a conversation these days without thinking about crypto. Can you say more about digital assets and any projects you have ongoing or plan to continue?
Sure. Thanks, Diane. And you're right, you can't pick up the paper and miss it. Our project, while it was initially added to our agenda called Digital Assets, it's been narrowed to cryptocurrency. And effectively, what it's looking at is the accounting for third-party cryptocurrency held by a commercial-type company. And the reason I say "commercial" is because the extent it's held by funds, there's already specialized accounting for those. And the current model for those commercial-type entities is effectively a continuous markdown based on lowest pricing model, because it's effectively an intangible asset impairment model. And what we heard as part of our Agenda Outreach was that wasn't necessarily displaying the true economics. It didn't allow for recovery. It didn't allow for transparency on what the actual fair value of those holdings were. So that's the direction our board's moving. It's a fairly narrow subset. It's third-party cryptocurrency, but it's the area that we heard was in the most need of standard setting to better reflect the economics.
Any other questions for Rich? Rick?
Thanks, Kathy. Rich, I really appreciated your comments as far as describing the board's focus on prioritizing the standard setting and the right standards at the right time. How do you measure that type of philosophy and then measure due process? I mean, as far as pace, efficiency, and then due process in the system?
And, Rick, that's a great point. We hear questions often about speed, right? What's the appropriate speed? What's the appropriate pace? But regardless of what pace we're taking, our full due process is still there. All of our decisions are made in public meetings. We still issue exposure drafts. We redeliberate the exposure draft, and only upon the majority action of our board do we ever get through those steps and issue final standards. When I talk about pace, probably the biggest variable is how we set the project at the start, and do we have broad agreement from our board on what we're setting out to do and the direction that we're going to go to do it. And that legwork, and I will say the Agenda Outreach process was very important in setting that legwork for many of the projects on our agenda, ultimately will affect how timely we can complete those standards. But I'll assure you, the full due process steps don't change.
Other questions for Rich? If not, Rich, thank you very much. I'm going to turn now to our FASAC Chair, Mike Morrow. Mike?
Thank you, and good day, everyone. My material can be found in your, my report can be found in your materials on page 144. I'd like to highlight some recent activities and upcoming activities, and starting with our September meeting, and I think you'll note appropriately some overlap with the topics that Rich just discussed, and our goal to be keeping up with the rapid pace here. We have a very fluid agenda that tries to address the topics there at hand. So the first topic we discussed was targeted improvements to income tax disclosures. During that session, FASAC members discussed potential improvements to the disclosure of income taxes paid and the rate reconciliation. Overall, council members were very supportive of enhancements to these disclosures. Investors emphasized the importance of understanding the rate reconciliation and the disaggregation of cash taxes paid. Preparers indicated that disclosing additional information about cash taxes paid would be operational, while disclosing additional information in the rate reconciliation, while workable, would present more challenges. Specifically regarding income taxes paid, many council members indicated a preference for a principles-based requirement for disaggregation, but others favored a more quantitative threshold. As to the rate rec, council members are generally supportive of improvements to the rate reconciliation disclosure that would provide a more granular information using either a quantitative threshold approach or a specific category approach, both of which are being considered by the board. And investors noted that a disaggregated rate reconciliation would provide decision-useful information. The second topic was accounting for and disclosure of crypto assets. During that session, the FASB staff provided an update to the council members on the project, including the board's recent discussions on scope. Council members provided input about the scope, as well as current presentation and disclosure practices, and supported the project scope. At our upcoming December FASAC meeting, which will be, by the way, our first in-person meeting since January of 2020, we anticipate the topics will include segment reporting to discuss the proposed update and seek input from council members, accounting for government grants to discuss preliminary feedback received from the invitation to comment and seek the council members' views about this topic, and then also an update on other select FASB projects to update the council members on recent progress, some of the items that Rich just discussed. I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Mike. Questions? No? Well, thank you so much, Mike. Appreciate your report.
Thanks, Kathy, and good afternoon, everybody. I know we're going to do this at the end, but I wanted to take a quick second to thank Kathy Casey for her leadership and Jeff Esser for his wise counsel. We very much appreciate all that you've done for investing your experience, your expertise with the FAFF and with the GASB, so thank you both. For the GASB, after a busy second quarter in which we issued three standards, a concept statement, and an exposure draft, the third quarter really started, starting a lot of projects that the board had added to its agenda but had delayed, really started working on them until we got through that period and getting those other projects completed. Most significantly, we started a major project ongoing, Concern Disclosures, and Severe Financial Stress, where we're going to attempt to define both of those concepts within the government environment, and then provide governments with some disclosure requirements if they use their judgment, find themselves in either of those two situations. We also started a practice-issue project on non-financial asset presentation and disclosure, and pre-agenda research on subsequent events. The third quarter also saw a 90-day comment period kind of span that third quarter on an exposure draft for certain risk disclosures that we issued in late June. We got a lot of good comments and kind of a large number of comment letters, including from users as the result of some of the additional outreach and new efforts. We're trying to get more user input, so we were really happy with that turnout, and the board will now start working our way through those comments and redeliberations. Finally, I will say that we are thankful to have onboarded a practice fellow from Forbes. We're very grateful to Becca Kaiser and Forbes for coming to work with us for a couple of years. Becca is going to be spending a significant amount of her time on our monitoring activity for electronic financial reporting. While this will never be a GASB standard that will require electronic financial reporting, it's important that we understand what's going on with how users are ingesting government financial information, and what impacts and what results should that have on the GASB, what should we be doing as a standard setter in that environment? So we're grateful to have more resources to devote to that activity. So with that, I'll conclude my report and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks very much, Joel. Do we have questions for Joel? Shendran?
So, Joel, first of all, I want to acknowledge the very productive quarter, and that kind of brings to mind a question. You know, we've talked a fair amount about the pressure on local governments as far as their resources, particularly as it pertains to us when you look at the area of financial management and reporting. So how do you think that we should take that into account as the GASB looks at, you know, our standard-setting, you know, efforts, process, agenda going forward?
Thanks, Shendran. And then that's a complicated question, right? It can be, but it is certainly something that we routinely are thinking about. Small governments in particular, all governments are really challenged for resources right now. Small governments always have and will continue to be in particular challenge. So we think about, like with comment periods, having extended comment periods, we think about trying to make the standard as simple and as practical to implement as possible, and we do a lot of work throughout our process to make sure that that happens. At some point, complicated transactions will necessitate complicated accounting standards. We'll just do our best to make them simple. But maybe even for larger projects and standards, extended implementation periods for smaller governments so that... easier for smaller governments to implement our standards, but we always will recognize that challenge.
Other questions for Joel? Yeah, Rick, and then Mary?
Thanks, Kathy. So, Joel, you mentioned the responses you received on the certain risk disclosure exposure draft, and could you tell us, was it more? Was it less? How did you get comments?
Sure. Well, if you step back, and I kind of looked at the last 20 or so standards, and you look at not the major standards, like the LEAST standard, and not the really technical standards, like an omnibus, but the general standard, like the risk disclosure might be, on average, we probably get about 30 to 32 comment letters, about two to three to four from users. On this standard, we got 48 comment letters, and we got 15 from users. So we were really pleased with that, and we see that that's a result of things like an electronic input form that we piloted last fall and then used here to make it easier for groups to use that. Nine people actually used the electronic input form of the 48, plus seven others used the questions from the input form to format their letter that they ended up submitting, like a traditional comment letter. So that's 16 people that, in essence, used the electronic input form. And of those nine that used the electronic input form, seven were users. So I think that that really facilitated more user engagement. We produced videos to try to engage with users, to make it easier for them to kind of understand the concepts and engage them and direct them towards the exposure draft, try to drive input. We've got some statistics on how we think that was also successful in getting the word out and getting more input. So we're trying to use technology, use new ways to engage with people, and we think that that's been successful.
Other questions for Joel? So, Joel, just wanted to follow up. You highlighted the additional resource that's going behind monitoring and focusing on electronic financial reporting. And we know that there's legislation that's being contemplated by Congress that could speak to the establishment of electronic reporting standards. What would the potential impact be of that legislation on what you do? And what role does GASB, should GASB have in that, in your view?
Sure. Thanks, Kathy. So the Financial Data Transparency Act is an act that's working its way through Congress, and we will see how it goes. That is an example of our concern. And while irrespective of that, we are going to be devoting more time to this effort and understanding what our role should be and whatever this evolution of financial reporting is, but this act would speed that up in requiring in some way, shape, or form, machine-readable information to come out of at least some government reporting that works its way through, for example, the MSRB. And if somebody else is setting that data standard, is setting a standard for what information users need, and setting what's important, and it's not us being involved in that process, then it affects us achieving our mission, which is to make sure that users receive the right financial information out of government reports. And so we would like to be involved in whatever that standard, whatever that process is, whether it comes from that act or not come from that act, as a standard setter, I think should be in setting what the right information for users to receive is.
Thanks very much, Joel. Are there other questions? Yeah, Manju?
Joel, as we often hear about financial resource constraints for smaller and local governments, do you, what do you think GASB should be taking, should be taking those concerns into account as it moves forwards with standard setting? And these resource constraints are not just financial, but also, as we know, accountants. There is a great shortage of accountants, and it's very difficult for public sector to compete with private sector for limited resources.
Sure. Thanks, Manju. There's, you know, a lot that we could do there, and we are trying to do. It's making, trying to make the standards understandable, simple, as simple as they can be. It is trying to have, you know, effective date periods be delayed for small governments so that they can learn from governments. I think technology is also part of our solution here, and that I think that at some point, complicated transactions will necessitate complicated gap, and technology might be the answer rather than people. But it's also working on the right projects. We understand that governments are challenged, and if we're going to undertake a project, we need to make sure that it really is going to have that cost benefit to users to make it worth asking governments to undertake this effort, understanding the governments are challenged by their resources, in particular small governments. So it's something we are always working through and paying attention to.
If there are no other questions for Joel, thank you very much for your report, and I will turn to Beth Pierce, our guest act chair. Beth?
Thank you very much. A pleasure to be here in these new offices, and I just have to say, great job. It's really, really a first-class place. So thank you very much for that. Our October meeting was well-attended, and we had very animated discussion, feedback on various topics. Those are on page 158 of your package. And as you look at those, there was a great deal of discussion on capital assets, particularly capital assets that are being considered for sale, going concerns and uncertainties, and severe financial stress. As you might imagine, that's a big issue in... We had a great deal of animated discussion on these, and a great discussion also on the implementation guide. Looking forward to that. We had an informational session as well on the current revenue and expense recognition process and the tentative changes and decisions that so far in the project, and the staff did a great job. So, Joel, I just want to thank you for that. It was extraordinarily informative, and a lot of questions that came out of that. You mentioned the issue of reduction of people that are interested, frankly, in government and finances, and the issues we're having post-COVID in those careers. And I would agree with Manju that it's more difficult than ever to get folks in the finance field, particularly government. And what you've done, I just want to say thank you in terms of making it more understandable. The videos are great, and having that electronic reporting. Where GASSAC has been involved is looking at ways that we can reach out to our stakeholders and get more involvement, and hopefully get more involvement with classes. One of our members, happens to be another Vermonter, is a head of an accounting division at the University of Vermont, and they're looking at ways that they can increase the content of government finance, because I frankly think that's very exciting, and we need more folks in that field. Post, pre-COVID, if I had a posting, I might get 50, 60 applications. We're lucky if we get three right now, and it's really having an impact, particularly, as you said, on smaller governments. One of the things that we've changed over the last couple of months is the way that we're handling the Executive Committee process. We've moved that outside of the GASSAC meeting. By the time you finish the GASSAC meeting, when you go to the Executive Committee, you're kind of burnt out. So what we're doing is a separate meeting, and what we're looking for is more meetings as we're going through this. And what we're also doing is taking a look at the improvements that we can make in the GASSAC process, and again, involving more stakeholders, and looking at ways that we could do more information in the background of the various stakeholders and get them engaged. So I think we've done a lot of work there, and because of that, I believe that when we looked at feedback on emerging practice issues, we had much greater comment than I've seen in any of the meetings that I've been involved in. And I'm just going to list some of the things that they mentioned in this, potential need for guidance related to climate risk disclosures, and some of the issues that you see in Senate Bill. I want to comment that Lisa Parker did a very good draft right up front, and... And pensions and all PEB expenditures in the fund and in the financial statements, a potential need to address whether guidance on the 2014 tobacco settlement will apply to the more recent opioid settlement. And that's a big issue for us. I remember working in another state, walking through the issues in terms of the tobacco settlement, and it's going to take time. And just as you said, there are less resources to do that now. A potential need to... A potential need to address the labor shortage in government accounting and strategize on ways to encourage state and local governments to report on gap. I mentioned that earlier. I won't expand on that. And a desire for increased extractability of data points in the financial reports. And again, that's what you folks have emphasized and we're thrilled that that there's a meeting of the minds there and an awareness of the implementation of new standards in governments' limited resources. And I think focusing on what's important and what we found frankly was the GASAC had a very strong link up with what you're doing in GASB. And again, as we try to reach our membership and stakeholders, I think we're going to have some success. So thank you, Joel, for your work and thank you for the FAF for your work. And that concludes my report.
Thanks very much, Beth. No questions for Beth on our report? If not, thank you very much. It is a pleasure to see you in person.
It's a pleasure to be here. I love the offices and John, good work.
So our next item is a report from the Oversight Committee. That's co-chired by David Lillard and Tim Ryan. David?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The standard-setting process Oversight Committee under the leadership of Trustee Tim Ryan and myself met yesterday, Monday, and in regard to FASAC matters, the committee met on those matters and deliberated them on, reviewed the topics that the FASAC had addressed in the past year as well as their outreach activities. You've already heard the report from our great Chair, Mike Morrow, on that point, and it's very thorough. Secondly, we also looked at the GASB too and had a report from GASB Chair Joel Black and Director Alan Skelton, who reviewed progress that's made on the technical agenda and pre-agenda research projects, as well as post-implementation review or PIR activities on six statements. Some of these matters have been covered also as in Chair Black's previous report during this session. In particular, with the committee, Chairman Black highlighted the initiation of several activities in the third quarter, including a project for ongoing concern uncertainties and severe financial stress, a project on classification of non-financial assets and research on subsequent events. He also focused on continued monitoring activities, including electronic financial reporting and digital assets and continued deliberations and progress on two remaining comprehensive projects, the financial reporting model and the revenue and expense recognition. Finally, Chairman Black covered current environmental, environment issues, dealing with the board emphasizing the stakeholders' ongoing personnel shortages and internal activities and initiatives and noting that the continued focus on recruiting for key positions and leverage of their electronic input form. Those were all good topics that were covered. Want to turn it over now to co-chair of the Oversight Committee, Trustee Tim Ryan for the FASB update and PCC update, and I'll return afterwards to give a further report on meeting observations.
Great. Thank you, David, and good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining. We also met, as David said yesterday, we, we had an update from Rich Jones and Rich covered many of the topics that he had covered earlier today in his update in this session. To give the group a sense, we spent quite a bit of time ensuring as we do each meeting around input that we get and Rich reviewed the input that's been coming from investors, which is at record levels through the efforts that Rich and the team have made to make sure not only that we are listening, but then acting on investor feedback, but also discuss mechanisms to get feedback from other stakeholders as well. We discussed the responsive agenda that has been formed as a result of that investor feedback and from other stakeholders as well. And then we get into executing or the plan and the steps being taken to execute that agenda. We talked about staffing levels and Rich shared with us that the projects are fully staffed. We talked about timing and there's clearly an emphasis to have more timely standard setting, especially given how fast the current environment is moving without sacrificing quality. And we talked and Rich updated us on staffing levels, project management tools, accountability, and how he's using the, the research agenda and the technical agendas interchangeably to make sure they complement each other to allow for faster standard setting, given that that's an area of input we've received for opportunity for improvement. We also talked about the pros and cons of accelerated standard setting and we weighed those and had got comfortable that Rich and the team were thinking about those the right way. We also spent some time going through the technical agenda. We also spent time going through current events, including talking about one of the questions that Tim C asked earlier around crypto and digital assets. We also got an update from Rich on terms of timing and, and given the agenda and there's three standards that Rich and the team would like to have standards out within the next year or slightly around the next year, which is evidence of the faster pace that they are trying to drive. We also had the chance to hear from different people who observed various meetings and were proud to say that there were 10 trustees who participated in different oversight meetings during the last period and a very active level of involvement from the trustees. Rich also gave us an update on the PR, PIR timelines and we talked specifically about revenue leasing and CECL. And they are now all in stage two where, given that the standards have been adopted, we're looking at post-effective date, cost and benefits. And then we went through the timing of phase three and we'll begin to expect to see reports in 2024 on revenue in 2025 and leasing in CECL either 2025 or 2026. So we then also got an update from Sue Cosper on the September PCC meeting. And that was a virtual meeting because of the office moves that took place. And we got an update on what the various things that committee is driving and most notably their, their agenda. We also asked if there are any divergent, major divergences between the PCC agenda and the FASB agenda and Sue had shared that there were not any major divergences. I know our committee member Rick Racing had the chance to observe that meeting. So Rick, I might turn it over to you for observations if that's okay.
Yeah, certainly. And thanks, Tim. Just in general, the main observation I'd have is, as usual, there was just really great discussion between the FASB members and the PCC members, but also the staff. There was a lot of good interaction all the way around, primarily on profit interest topic and lease implementation or leases with common control. Those were the, the most spirited, I would say, discussions and excellent feedback, I think, that the PCC members were able to provide for the FASB members and the staff. So it worked as designed.
Thank you, Rick. And David, I'll turn it back to you if that's okay.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Let's see, Tim rather, excuse me. And the trustee reports on the meeting observations for the Oversight Committee. At each committee meeting, we discuss the advisory group and the FASB and GASB board meetings, as well as each of the committees that members have observed in the last quarter. As Tim pointed out during his report, this is a record-setting quarter. During the third quarter, we had 10 trustees that participated personally in oversight, which represents a very excellent effort at that function in the investor interest. I want to be sure and point out that going through these committees here that for the GASAC meeting on October 10 and 11 and the GASB meeting on October 11 and 12, we had trustees Ganer Wala, Lynette Kelly, Lewis and Lillard and also Rollings who participated in that. And I'll call on trustee Manju Ganer Wala to give a report on those meetings.
Thank you, David. I had the privilege of observing in person GASAC and GASB meetings. So with regards to GASAC meeting, they had a robust agenda as we heard from Chair Pierce. They provided feedback on five very highly technical topics. I was impressed with the high level of participation among members. Given this diversity of stakeholders, there were differing opinions, comments, but always a healthy back and forth discussions to come to consensus. The Chair encouraged everybody to comment and provided opportunity to do so for ones who wanted to comment. In addition to the highly technical topics, the group also provided feedback on emerging issues. And one that stood out for me was again, the shortage of resources, especially human resources accountants. There's the pipeline is just so narrow lately and governments are truly having difficult time filling vacant positions. And I think yet GASAC members wanted GASB to be kind of mindful of that as they, they develop and implement standards. Soon the GASB meeting followed GASAC meeting and my observation, overall observation there was standard setting is no easy task. The members discussed each topic at great length. GASB had four action items on its agenda. There were robust discussions on every aspect of standard setting, usefulness versus cost, complexity, impact on stakeholders, feedback that they had received from GASAC and other commentators who had commented through in written comments. And also deferring opinions within GASB members. All that took, you know, a lot of patience, a lot of knowledge. I just came away with added appreciation for all the hard work they do. So that's my observation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Manju. Also, we had the respect to the FASAC meeting on September 20. Trustee Tim Kristin attended that meeting and has some observations, I believe, for us.
I do, sir. Thank you, David. And Chair Mike Morrow already gave a very comprehensive report on the details of the meeting, so I will not repeat the detailed activities, but just commenting on the format and effectiveness of the meeting. Unsurprisingly, Mike is a very effective Chair. Really did an outstanding job of running the meeting. This group of FASAC volunteers is a very talented group. So they're, they're very thoughtful in what they put forth. The, under Mike's agenda leadership, the agenda was put together. Rich did a great job of outlining the activities that FASB had been doing and talking about investor outreach. And then there were regulators there, Kevin Vaughn from the SEC and Barb Vanek from PCLB, who kind of set an environmental tone of what the regulators are thinking. And that was followed up by Sarah Lord from the Auditing Standards Board of the AICPA. Really sort of a technology emphasis on how technology might be impacting standards. So that was all the environment that was put together for the FASAC members. And then they got into this, as Mike mentioned, income tax disclosure and crypto assets. And this was pre-FTX, so the crypto wasn't quite as hot as it is now. But already it was deemed pervasive. So we were already on, on the track. And those are both so early. There were no conclusions reached, but a very professional conversation, differing point of views, as you said, Manju, in your meeting. But the professionalism, the way they work, you could see how we generate a tremendous amount of benefit. Sir.
Okay. There also occurred on September 30th, the FASB and ISB meeting and trustee Mary Barth may have an observation on that.
Thank you, David. I did observe the joint ISB, FASB meeting was held at ISB's London offices on September 30. The purpose of the meeting was educational, so neither board was making any decisions. But all ISB members and all FASB members were present. One member was present virtually but still there. And so was participated. There was a day-long meeting, nine o'clock in the morning till 3:30 in the afternoon, almost a full day. And the, the boards were engaged and thoughtful in all their discussions. I was really impressed. It was clear to me, observing that members of each board were anxious to learn from the other board, what each was hearing from its stakeholders and to really understand at a deep level, the rationale behind recent board decisions. For example, ISB members were particularly interested in the FASB's rationale for dropping the goodwill project. Recall that the current standard has converged on an impairment-only approach and the FASB had been leaning towards reverting to amortization, but has since dropped the, the project. On this and other issues, I sensed a clear desire on both boards to learn from each other.
Okay. Thank you for that report. And also we had the FASB meeting that occurred on October 12. Trustee Lynette Kelly was there, I believe.
Great. Thank you, David. I'll just concur with the general sentiments that have been expressed so far. The level of preparedness of the board members, the commitment to getting it right. Clearly, there was significant engagement in the discussions and the discussions, of course, were very thoughtful. What I came away with is that there was a real sense of and, and they were very cognizant of the impact of the standard setting on all the various stakeholders. And finally, some really excellent staff support to support those conversations.
Okay. And trustee Bruce Herring also attended that meeting on October 12. Do you have anything to add, Bruce?
No, I think Lynette covered it.
Okay, very good then. Okay. And finally, we had the SBAC Committee on November the 10th. Shandraon Thomas did oversight on that. And now whether you have any observations, you may or may not, but okay, thank you very much then for that. That, and Tim, do you have anything else for the board at this point?
I don't, David. Thank you very much.
All right. That concludes our report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, David and Tim. So our next report is from our FAF Executive Director, John.
Yes, thank you, Kathy. As Beth Pierce observed a few minutes ago, we are hosting this meeting today in our new offices in Norwalk. And I'm very pleased to report that our move, which started at the end of September, has been a success. We continue to track under finishing work to complete. We feel that we have effectively managed the challenges associated with the supply chain issues and we have largely stuck to our original timeline. I want to applaud Mary Crotty, our Chief Operating Officer, as well as our external partners for their tireless efforts. And I also want to acknowledge Mary's whole team. These we sincerely thank you all for making this major and labor-intensive project become a reality. Kathy mentioned earlier that our Board of Trustees this morning approved our strategic plan. And she also observed that we will be publishing it in the near future. I do want to note that the work does not stop here. And we are going to aim to develop a cadence for reporting progress to the trustees and stakeholders as we go forward. I want to express my gratitude to the trustees, especially those serving on our Strategic Planning Task Force under the leadership of FAF Vice Chair Mary Barth, as well as Matt Broder and Stephanie Anako on my team for their dedication to this important initiative. Earlier, Kathy announced the appointment of Ed Burner to serve as the Chair of the FAF Board of Trustees. I want to take this opportunity to say we are excited to enter this new chapter under Ed's leadership. At the same time though, I'd be remiss if I didn't also note that we are saddened to say goodbye to Kathy, who has made extraordinary contributions to the FAF, both as trustee and as Chair. And we cannot thank her enough for her dedication to the mission and exceptional leadership over the years. Kathy noticed, noted that a number of other important appointments, including new FASB member Joyce Joseph. And I would like to thank the Appointments Committee as well as Betsy Gardi, the FASV Vice President for Human Resources, for the substantial amount of time and effort they devoted to completing this year's scope of work and recognize that they've already started to look ahead to the 2023 search plans for 2024 appointments. Finally, I'd like to say a few words about our Content Vision and Enablement Project, our CVNE project. As we shared in the last meeting, we successfully completed the implementation of the new publication platform for the FASB codification, including making that available in a revised web store accessible through our website. I'm glad to note that we remain on track to fully execute the CVNE platform build by the end of this year. And we anticipate completing the implementation of the GASB codification and GAR system onto the new platform over the next several weeks. Throughout this complex project, the FAF Publishing Team has kept the trains running, effectively attending to both the CVNE requirements and FASB and GASB's publishing schedule, which has been active. We have also continued our planning efforts for scalable and sustainable support models for our publishing systems. So again, I want to applaud both our internal and external partners for making this initiative move towards a successful conclusion with tracking within budget. And so unless there are any questions, I'd say thank you and turn it back to Kathy.
Thanks so much, John. So our final report is from our treasurer, David Lillard. Dave?
Thank you, Kathy. The FAF's financial results for the quarter ending September 30, 2022 are located on Master Page 161 of your materials. Overall, the financial condition of the FAF remains strong. Net assets increased $20.2 million for the first nine months. This was primarily driven by the upfront recognition of the entire annual FASB and GASB accounting support fees upfront. Overall, there is a $4.5 million Overall, there is a $4.5 million favorable variance to the budget in that regard. Operating expenses were $6.1 million less than the budget, primarily due to three factors. First was publishing expenses, which were lower due to deferred depreciation expense related to the CVNE initiative. Secondly, salary and benefits for several vacant positions across FASB, GASB and FAF. And thirdly, lower travel and meeting costs related to COVID-19. Offsetting these favorable results, investment income was $2.3 million less than budgeted due to market conditions. The FAF's balance sheet remained strong as total assets increased by $38 million. Fixed assets, operating lease right-of-use asset and operating lease liability all increased related to the headquarters relocation project. Overall, the headcount for the FAF was seven below budget, reflecting several vacant FAF, FASB and GASB personnel positions. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, David. So before we conclude our session today, I'd like to recognize departing trustee Jeff Esser and take a moment to present him with a proclamation of appreciation. Jeff began his five-year term in January 2018 and his tenure will conclude on December 31, 2022. I'd like to express our sincere appreciation for Jeff's service to the boards, our stakeholders and our mission. In addition to the important role he played as a trustee, he also served as the Chair of the Compensation Committee. And I want to thank him for your, for his valuable contributions, leadership and commitment of your time and talent. Thank you so much, Jeff. I'm most grateful. Okay. So Mary, I'm turning it over to you.
Turn it over to me separately. Hello, my name is Mary Barth. I am Vice Chair of the FAF Board of Trustees. And before we officially close our meeting today, I would like to take this opportunity to express our thanks to our Chair, Kathy Casey. Her term will end on December 31 of this year and this will serve as her last meeting as our Chair. Kathy's contribution to the FAF Board of Trustees have been numerous, both before and during her tenure as Chair. As a new member of the board in 2018, Kathy served on the Oversight Committee and brought her unique perspective as a former regulator to the FAF's crucial oversight function. In 2019, Kathy also served on the Appointments Committee during the year that the committee selected the new FASB Chair, the new GASB Chair and five trustees. Her contributions to the board were so strong that she was an easy and unanimous choice to serve as our new Chair, beginning in 2020. As Chair, she oversaw the transition of new leadership across the organization. This timeframe brought a new executive director as head of the FAF, as well as new chairs for both the FASB and GASB, as I mentioned. She then led the organization during the unforeseen challenges of a global pandemic, while helping to ensure that we keep a laser focus on stakeholders' needs during a turbulent time. And she oversaw the preparation for and execution of the FAF's 25th anniversary during this year. Kathy is passionate about the important role that trustees play in securing the independence of the standard-setting process and effectively advocated for our organization with stakeholder groups, members of Congress and regulators. She has been, in short, a model leader for our organization for the last three years. It has been a pleasure to work with Kathy and I am honored to present her with a proclamation of our appreciation.
Thank you very much, Mary. And thank you to my fellow colleagues, FAF, FASB, GASB. It's been an utter privilege. So this ends the public session of today's FAF Board of Trustees meeting. I want to thank everyone who joined us on my webcast for this meeting. And I'd also remind everyone that the next FAF Board of Trustees meeting will be held here in Norwalk on Tuesday, February 28, 2023. So I want to thank you and I hope everybody has a great day.